Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right. Thank you for taking time after this special meeting. The next item on our agenda is the approval of today's agenda. I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda unless there is a motion to any changes to today's agenda.
I move we amend the motion, or the agenda?
Is there a second to amending the agenda?
Second.
All right. We have a specific discussion. If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor of amending the agenda for today's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note that the vote was unanimous. Okay. Items for changing the agenda. Anybody? Larry?
Hi. Claudia, do you want to go ahead?
Well, we need to amend the reason for going into closed session.
Are we? Can you state it publicly?
Yes. We need to add purpose under the category of potential actions to be taken relative to the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically pertaining to employees, personnel, and discussion of individual owner assessment accounts as permitted by the Maryland Homeowners Association Act, Section 11b11481. Eight and one.
So, in essence, we're talking about, not only were we talking, the original intent was to go into closed session, talk about assessments, now we're actually adding a personnel issue as well?
Yes.
Is that it? That's how I understand it. Everybody else okay with that? All right. Any other proposed changes to today's agenda? Seeing now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the agenda, the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note that the vote was unanimous. Okay. Next item on the agenda is President's Mark. Couple of things. Number one, I wanted to let everybody know, this is our first foray into a virtual meeting environment. It's still in its testing phases right now. Actually, yesterday, Josh Davis, Director of Marketing Communications, and Steve Kobowski, who is the IT Manager, and I successfully tested a virtual meeting application that we have that comes along with our Microsoft Office 365 subscription. We successfully tested it. It provides both audio and video. The challenge is how to expand that out into a larger and interactive audience, especially in regard to public comments. So, we're looking at a couple of different things. Hopefully, there won't be any costs associated. That's one of the things we're looking at, of sort of budget-friendly solutions. I know before I retired, we had certainly addressed this issue, but there was a cost involved. So, we're looking at ways to be creative with regard to making sure that whatever, going forward, whatever virtual meeting that we hold, that we will be able to have public comments and have the audience interact with us in a way that's conducive to that kind of communication. So, more to come on that. I apologize also in advance for today's meeting. I suspect that there will be people that wanted to provide some level of public comment. We also have Facebook Live as one of the other avenues for communication. So, if there's anybody actively watching the Facebook Live feed, I'd ask that you provide comments from a public comments perspective. Kami Rogers and Tom Janasek are monitoring that, and we will certainly bring those up and read them in the public comments section of the meeting. Also, based on the announcement that went out prior to the meeting, we've gotten two email responses for public comments that I will read as part of our public comments section. So, the other part of it too is, you know...
Do you tell them how to do it? Go to Facebook and go to Ocean Pines Association on Facebook and put their comments in the comments section. That's how you do it.
Yeah.
So, if you go to Ocean Pines Association on Facebook, you can write your comments in the comments section. We'll read them here and open them up.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. That's good advice. So, just all those folks that use Facebook, please take Tom's advice on how to interact with us. The other thing I wanted to do is, and this is more of a public service announcement, you know, due to the, you know, the economy and the things that are affecting everyday life here in Ocean Pines and around the country in that matter, you know, be advised that whatever we can do to patronize our local restaurants and so on and so forth, if you have the opportunity to do so, I'd ask that you, that you do that. I know that the Yacht Club is offering a delivery, and I'm sure, and there are also other restaurants in the area that are offering the same option. So, if they're, if you're so inclined, please consider patronizing those particular places so that we can keep our local environment squared away. That's all I have with regard to public comments. I'm sorry, with regard to President's Mark. So, the next item on the agenda is public comments. I will take the liberty of reading the first, reading the first set of public comments that we had received. This individual was Sarah Busser, B-U-S-E-R, and the public comment is, "Due to the COVID-19 virus and subsequent unemployment in the area, will the OPA be reducing HOA fees this year? If not, will they be waiving interest and penalties for late payments? Many in our community struggle to come up with these funds in good times." Obviously, these are not times of plenty. Sincerely, Sarah Busser. So, I think that in answer to that, that's the whole reason we are meeting today, to look at potential options with regard to the assessment and the impact it has on folks in our community. I offer, any other director would like to reply to that? Okay? All right. If not, thank you. There was one other comment, and it was in regard to, this is Keith Kaiser, and he said, "My question for the board, does the golf course have its own well from which it draws water for irrigation? Or is it supplied by accounting and therefore paid for my OP?" So, I think that, I don't want to be out of turn. I want to offer that there's either the GM or maybe Steve Tuttle can kind of give us the answer to that question, just so they know that.
Sure. There are two wells that are owned by OP and provide water to the ponds, and then the water from the ponds is used to irrigate the golf.
Right.
We do not buy water from Western County.
All right.
Correct. There's two pumping stations. There's one on 16 and there's one on 9, and those are the ponds there that we pump. This has been brought by Andre. He's been there for over 30 years.
All right. Thank you. So, those were the two items that we received as email questions or email statements for public comments. Kami, Tom, has there been any comments on the Facebook Live feed at this point?
Not as of yet, but realize there is a delay, probably about, as I'm watching, about 30 seconds to 45-second delay on when this goes out to when we get information back.
All right. Unless the, unless my colleagues here want to move forward, I say we leave public comments open for at least another minute and make sure that anybody who is joining a little bit late knows that they can indeed provide a public comment. As a matter of fact, while we're waiting, just trying to think creatively here, if there are other comments from people that either A, didn't get the message that they could email a comment, or B, did not look at the Facebook Live feed and realized they could provide information, I suspect it would be due diligence on our part to look at those things after the meeting. In other words, if there are other comments that come in, let's pull them in and get them into the record in some way, shape, or form. And if we have to respond individually to that individual, we can certainly do that. So, let's not have a sort of hard cutoff here. Let's, let's say that, hey, throughout, you know, for the next several hours, if people want to send that information, we'll certainly give them the information they request. So, I know when you're doing a live feed, you don't want dead silence. I'm looking at Josh. He's well-versed in these production environments, and so therefore, I guess I'm just rambling on here at this point to make sure that we have an audio feed along with, along with the live feed. Any, any other thoughts about how we capture the information from people who wanted to do public comments after the meeting's over? Anybody?
I was just making clear where they send their comments. So, directors.
Directors of Ocean Pines.
Right. So, for the sake of clarification, in case those didn't hear, please send, as we had announced earlier, directors@oceanpines.org, so all seven of us can see those questions and respond accordingly. Collette?
Yeah. Also, I'll mention that as Secretary, I made a decision as of our previous meeting that public comments will be captured in the minutes. So, the name of the individual, the address of the individual, and the general topic will show up in the minutes of our previous meeting. So, when we review those minutes next time, we'll have that. So, that's a change in protocol, which I think increases our transparency and the, you know, public nature of public comments.
Yeah. Quite well taken. I think that's a welcome change. I know we had done that in the past, and we kind of got away from it for various reasons, and I support the fact that, you know, with your guidance, we're bringing that back, back in. Okay. I think, have we had any other comments? If not, I'd like to move on. The next item on our agenda, standby, I gotta pull this back up. I don't have multiple screens here. Which? The next item, I'll close the floor for public comments. Next item, our capital purchase requests. The first one is for the 173 Teal Circle drainage pipe. John?
Okay. So, as you got, you received your handouts. This is something that's been going on for several months, if not six months. 173 Teal has a failed pipe. Couple of situations. One, the homeowner needed to do some work himself and ask for some time. Also, the team and myself, it was not an easy task to get a contractor who was available to do the work. We subsequently have, and actually, one of them is not even listed on the Fish Marine that I spoke to, along with Eddie. Everybody is busy. They don't have the free time. Most of the contractors are working on the work for us, whether it's bulkheads or drains, ditches, or whatever. Booty Hill, who is doing the work at Borderlands that the board has approved, has come forward now that they are on Ocean Pine soil. They have given us a bid for 173 at $16,650. That staff recommended, and that's what I'm going forward for approval. Booty Hill, $18,000,650, the lowest bid.
Entertain a motion to authorize the capital purchase request?
I have a question.
It's 18.
That comes out of...
We gotta get a session. Let's, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Go ahead.
Okay. That comes out of replacement resources?
Correct.
Other discussion?
It's all part of all the schedules that the team has put together. Yes.
Another discussion. Seeing now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing a capital purchase request of the pipe for 173 Teal Circle, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note that the vote was unanimous. The next capital purchase request is 80 Teal Circle drainage pipe.
Right. So, one of the reasons that I went into the detail I did on the first one is more so for the second one. As I mentioned, we're having a hard time getting contractors. Booty Hill is doing work down at Borderlands. They gave us the bid for the 173. Apparently, we also now, as our team was in that area, 80 Teal Circle has a failed drainage pipe. We asked Booty Hill. Booty Hill, since they will be there, we can get economies of scale. They have given us a bid for $18,975 to replace 80 Teal. We only have one bid, and that's what I'm trying to explain in the sense is that I can't get bids from the other ones where they're going to be consistent with this. They also know that they can't do it. I can certainly have them do it, but it would be consistent with the bids I received on the first one. So, basically, I'm saying that we did do the work on this, and that would be the lowest bid, the $18,975.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of the drainage pipe at 80 Teal.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing now, I'll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing a capital purchase request for the drainage pipe at 80 Teal Circle, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note that the vote was unanimous. I will beg the indulgence of my board colleagues. I forgot to add an item when we amended the agenda, and that is to move what we were going to use as an email vote for the generator for the police station into the public session here. So, I'm, again, I'm breaking protocol here, but I don't think anybody has a, Frank's giving me the, I'm solved. So, again, I apologize for not remembering to put that in. It's right here in my notes. So, I do want to add one more item. I know it's not part of protocol, but certainly, I think everybody's willing to discuss it. So, there's been a request to purchase a generator, replace the existing generator that's in the, currently serving the, the police station, and it's in conjunction with the construction of the new building, the admin building to support the police station. So, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the purchase of the generator. So, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Now, go back to, I believe, this, just so the public understands, we all have this information and have discussed it before, but since we were moving into a public session, we felt it more important to have this discussion publicly rather than to do the email vote because it was very time-sensitive, but waiting till today to discuss it, it's more important to have this information out front of the public rather than another email vote. So, other discussion. Tom?
I got a bunch.
All right.
Please. All right. First off, why wasn't the generator included in the price for the, for the police department in the first place?
So, I was not here for that piece, but I gotta believe it was that we did have a generator, and they must have been under the rationale that that generator would be okay. But I was not here back then.
Okay.
I can tell you, the one thing I can tell you, it was, it was not part of it.
Correct. Well, obviously, since we're approving it at this point.
That's obvious. Yes.
No, I mean, and plus, next, I just, I, it's, and I brought this up, that I don't understand the discrepancy in the pricing, and everybody's approved it, but there's $11,000 difference in pricing. Now, on March 5th, we got this, we got the bid request form from here, and then we had, and on that, on that proposal, on that bid request form, it says Barnes Electric sent the price for generators and installation on, now, hold on. This is the first one's here. Price for, just sent price for installation as of March 5th, 24, just prices for generators. So, all of a sudden, then on March 11th, we get a price for installation from Barnes Electric, but we never got that. It was never, it was never given to any of the board members to compare apples to apples because I have no idea what they're charged for installation. So, now we get this, and now it's told to me that it's an extra $3,200 to install a, an automatic transfer switch, but yet Barnes has it in their thing that there's a transfer switch included in their estimate. It's in here. It has a transfer switch. It might not be automatic, but there's not $3,200 between a manual and an automatic transfer switch. So, my question is, and we're doing most of the labor putting this thing in. We have to, we have to provide a crane or equipment to stick it in. We have to provide the gas there for both bids. We have to provide the electric to that, to that specific place, not necessarily wire it, but provide it to the outside section, and we have to provide the pad. So, these are basically identical, and I don't understand why there was an $11,000 difference in the price, other than these guys are already here and it makes it easier because I just don't get it. You can get these generators anywhere online for $28,000, anywhere, 28 to 30 grand. I don't care if it's Kohler, if it's Genoak, if it's whatever.
Right.
You can get them all day long. Granted, these guys are here, but I don't understand why there's such a difference in price. I really, please somebody. And you got a generator from Capital Electric at 26,547. I don't know if we reached, that's our third bid. I don't know if we reached out to them. If they have an electrician in town that's willing to prick and hook it up, or willing to hook it up, excuse me, I'm sorry. I just, I see these huge discrepancies, and without an explanation, it kind of, I just, I don't understand how we can all just vote yes for it, which is why I asked this to be during a public session. So, I'm here to listen to all the answers.
So, first, Director Janasek, thank you. I certainly understand your questions. Not saying I didn't have them myself at certain times, maybe some of the times and dates early that you did have. Let's just look at the building. Let's look at what, we have a contractor. We have a contractor has, who has a bunch of subcontractors. We have a contractor who opened up the clubhouse for us to use other subcontractors, but keep in mind, anytime you do that, I have to ensure, or they have to ensure, or we all have to ensure that everything will be insured, or that somebody's warranting or guaranteeing the work. With that said, anytime I have anything, or they have anything, whether it's electrical or anything else, and if I'm going to bring in two different contractors, if a situation does occur, obviously, it's not the best situation for the overall contract or even Ocean Pines. So, with that background, and it's certainly a legit question on your end, and I will do everything possible to answer it as I back, as I backtrack down. Tri-County Electrical, is the electrician doing the work there for Wayland? They're doing all the electric. Now, as you mentioned, the generator was not part of this in the beginning. The generator, you're right. Somewhere there around that $28,000 dollar price. Keep in mind, anytime I buy something, if we look online, I have to pay a markup to the contractor because that's where he gets his insurance and everything else and warranties. So, in my mind, somewhere around that $30,000 and the team was the cost of the generator. Tri-County gave us the total bid for it. We need to get this. Nobody else wanted to bid on it because, one, they know we already have an electrician in that building, and, two, their price is going to kind of be around the same, and they're not necessarily going to do all the legwork to give us what we're looking for. But the main thing is this, you have an electrician in there who's doing the work. It's warranted, it's guaranteed. Now, the $11,000, that's unfortunate that it came out that way because the difference, as you do apples to apples, and what, how it was explained to me is this. So, the generator, let's say, was somewhere around the $30,000, give or take a couple thousand, Tom, for this. The installation, they did not want to give us an installation price because they didn't want to get involved with the installation. But because we asked them to give us something so that I can come in here, or my team can come in here with three bids, they did. We then said there was other pieces that were missing. I asked for more detail, especially when you brought it up about that, that was a big difference. I was told about the switch, that the switch wasn't included, and we detailed that out. Now, you said it was included in the first one. I'd have to go back and check that. That's not what my team told me. That price comes out to about $32,000. So, if you add that plus the installation, you come out to around 7, 8 grand. The $11,000 then comes down to maybe 3 grand. Well, plus, I asked to go out, I asked my guys to go out, or people to go out and ask them because we do have a relationship, they do a lot of work for us. They didn't want to bid on it, but at least we went out and we tried, and that's certainly somebody that we would bring in if we could. So, that is the overall. Maybe the difference is, Tom, 3,000, not 11. Hopefully, that will be a little more within your sensitivity range, but based upon the fact that Tri-County Electrical is doing all the work in there, I certainly would not be the one to try to change for a couple, for a thousand or two, if I can even get them to do it. That's everything I have. That's what the team has. I got an overall building there that we're working on. I get it that at any given time, we can save some money somewhere, somewhere, somewhere else. You gotta look at the big picture. You certainly are legit questioning this. I have worked with the team to give more detail. Like I said, this started out as I received one, one item, as long, as well as on other bids that I've come forward with. We also have attachments, worksheets now, and we have a person that basically fills that stuff out so that we can give as much detail on this stuff as possible. And don't get me wrong, I don't, I don't want to question any of these things. I'd much rather you guys just do the building. But when I see something that's, that's a 25% difference in price, it throws up a red flag. And on this proposal paper that we got March 11th, and none of the directors got it until yesterday, it states right in there, generator and transfer switch price listed on generator contract. It might not say it on the generator contract, but it says it in this proposal. So, that's where I got that from. So, if it's a, so we can't go back to a $3,000 thing, it's more like a $7,000 to $8,000 thing. I just, do we go, and I, I, look, and I hate to do this because I've done construction my whole life. I know what it's like to have people on job, but I also know what it's like to mark stuff up in the middle of a job so you can make an extra 10 grand when you, when you need to. I'm not saying they're doing it, and I know it's going to come out that way, and I apologize, and I know they're doing a great job, and they've got all their contractors out here. Do we go to Wayland and say, hey, is there any way we can look at this price and streamline it just a little? You've got electricians on the job already. It's not like you have to bring in extra electricians or bring in an extra crane. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they've got the people here ready to do the work. The generator gets dropped off on Wednesday, they've got it set by Friday. I don't understand why their price would be higher. If anything, it should be lower. So, that's my opinion, and I know, and I know, I'm apologizing to you because I know you weren't here when they did the contract for the building, and you didn't have, you're privy to know that the generator most likely is not going to...
I researched it.
I know. I appreciate it.
And I'm not saying...
But I, and I just, but in, you know, looking at it, the building got twice as big, twice the size that it should have been. The generator should have been one of the things looked at when we did the contract. But, but anyway, that's just my feeling. I just want to make sure that we, you know, that, I mean, I can't justify 11 grand on a...
It's not 11 grand.
I can't justify 7 grand on a 20... 8 grand. I'm going to go back and check with the team. That's what I was told. I'll go back and check on that paperwork. I was specifically told, I spoke to my team this morning, the lead person. They told me the switch was not included on the initial bid.
Okay.
If that, yeah, 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 I understand. Specifically, I did not want to pull my team off the work they're doing today. This is a couple thousand dollars. I've explained, the main thing is, look, I, you know, I get it. It's not 11. Also, when you're doing a big building like this, and you have, and you put a contractor in place, yes, we are questioning. The clubhouse is a prime example. I have several board members here that have daily, if not hourly, oversight on me and the entire, and I have no problem with that. I'm going to make sure that came across right. I have no problem with it, and this is an example of why, not on your end, is that everything is checked. Everything, we do try to go and try to get other bids. We do ask about that, and we've had success with it. And I, I, compliments to Wayland, and I've said that before, and that's one of the main reasons why we're bringing in this clubhouse under budget, is that we were able to go out and get other subs, had to paint the markup piece on there, which would be the same thing here. But that's part of it, and I wouldn't do it any other way.
With all due respect, I, everything is checked, and I know you have a tremendous job ahead of you with all the, with the projects going on, but this obviously wasn't checked because I didn't get this installation thing from March 11th until yesterday.
Yeah.
So, obviously, it wasn't completely checked. Otherwise, I'd have had that, and I'd have been able to do the numbers. If we could have talked about it, we could have had this explanation, and I would have had no problem with it. But, so, I just, you look at it from my point of view, I'm here for a reason, to protect Ocean Pines, not to protect Wayland or anybody else. I'm, they're doing a great job, but if I start seeing things like this, I'm going to start questioning everything.
That's right.
That's just how it works.
Tom, Director Eric Janasek, I totally agree with you. My team and I...
I'm with Tom.
Director Tom, we totally agree. That is why my team came in early this morning. We put this together as well as yesterday and the other stuff, and we do understand it. With all respect, is, I understand that's yours, and you have to do that. Let's just not inhibit the whole process and look at the whole situation. That's all I ask, is that, you know, there's a way, and there's a way, and you definitely did it. We've answered it. Hopefully, now we can go forward and I can get approval on this thing, and we can do it. But yes, question it anytime. Absolutely, that's what the board does. But I believe the team and all of us have addressed it.
And I'm not trying to inhibit the process. Frankly, it's the generator. It can be set the day after the building's done. And I'm not trying to inhibit the process. Frankly, it's a generator. It can be set the day after the building's done. I mean, it can be set the day before. These things, I can't imagine. It takes more than two weeks to get them in. I haven't actually a- asked anybody, but.
This is when they have the subcontractor. In fact, I got an email from Whalen this morning asking me about it, because they have the team in place. That's another situation when you're dealing with construction. You probably have more knowledge than me. You just said you were in the contracting business. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. Um, but, you know, obviously, to bring people back and forth, and when they have them on, on, uh, site, obviously, helps. And I think we've been successful with the team that I've put together, with the clubhouse and this so forth, to make sure that we have minimal disruptions. But I totally understand your question.
That's, that's what I got. Other time, I, I'll let it go with that. Other discussion. Colette.
Yeah, I just want to understand the value associated with the warranty of the work itself that comes with having a existing contractor do this work versus bringing somebody new in.
Well, yeah, that's fine. So, two pieces to that. One, anything that goes into that building war- gets warranted by the, the overall contractor, who obviously has a markup on that work. Um, we brought in a con- we were able to bring in a couple times contractors in the clubhouse with, with terrific assistance and guidance from Marvin Steen, that saved us a lot of money. With that said, if I got, if I received a cost from that contractor, subcontractor, it had to be marked up, because in order for Whalen to warranty and guarantee that work in their piece, I can't just bring somebody I can, but then they're certainly not going to warranty it. So there is an additional cost, so that if a con- if a, if a, uh, generator is online, and I, and respect that Tom looked it up, we kind of did too, that costs twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, when you're dealing with a contractor, obviously, there's going to be some type of markup on that. So even if I went outside and brought it in, uh, there would be that situation.
Other discussion, Larry.
Yeah, and, and it's not just the general contractor that is responsible for the overall building, but you've got an architect behind the scene too, plus a, a supplier. And from our, from a product liability standpoint, we, if, if we, uh, go outside of that chain, then we lose the ability to go back up through that chain if there's a problem down the road. So that's, that's really the important part, and I believe, I believe the markup at this point is what, eight percent, John? Is that what it is?
Eight percent.
And so by going with Tri-County, that gives us an added level of warranty protection.
It gives us the opportunity, should something go wrong, to go back to Whalen, who we know has insurance. We assume Tri-County has it, and if they don't, Whalen's responsible. The problem on construction, I'm sure Tom will tell you, that when you're dealing with subcontractors, they go in and out of business all the time. They do or don't have insurance coverage, and they change their names like we change our clothes. So, having the general contractor, who we know is a stable organization, providing the oversight for this whole project with their subcontractor, gives us the path back to them, excuse me, should something go wrong.
Other discussion. Cam.
Uh, no, I, Larry just echoed a lot of the sentiments I had, uh, I was feeling about the chain. And is the infrastructure for the generator already laid down since? Yes, no?
The pad is built.
The pad.
The pad is built.
The pad, if that's what you mean by infrastructure.
Right, and Tom, you, you raise some very, um, I think, good points. What would it take for you to be satisfied that we should be moving forward on that?
Oh, it, uh, look, at this point, there, there's nothing that's going to, I mean, if we're, if we're going with Tri-County, it'll only have a, a six to one vote, but and, and I don't want, mind going with Tri-County. What I would have done is gone to Tri-County, said, why in the world, why is there such a discrepancy in the price? We're probably putting the same generator in that. And I understand they're on the job, but sometimes it makes it easier for the price to be escalated when they're on the job. And it's, it's, it, there's nothing they're going to do. I mean, I don't want to bring subcontractors to do this electric job at all. Not, don't get me, I don't want to.
I'm not going to do it.
And I, I, I understand that. I didn't ask you to do it, and I said I don't want to.
And I'm not going to do it.
Okay, Larry, okay, John, I mean, Jesus. I get it. Don't, don't, let's don't get testy here. You got a thing, and I'm asking a question.
I answered.
I'm a director, and yes, you did. But at some point in time, if I'm not going to ask questions, then what's the point of being here?
And I, and if you feel I was testy, I apologize. Certainly didn't. I'm just trying to make the point.
All right, let me, let me, uh, step in. So a couple things. Number one, first of all, Tom, I appreciate that. Thanks very much. This is the kind of stuff, you know, when, so we, uh, don't fall into the trap of rubber stamping things. So I really do appreciate your comments, and, and, you know, and it helps us think, and I would do the same thing for anybody, you know. It's, it's part of why I think we get along pretty well, is that we can actually come in from a different perspective and give some, you know, some credence to that perspective and talk it through, so that we're, we're, uh, you know, more informed about that. So, you know, thank you. The, the, the second part of it is, and it goes back to maybe what Cammy was saying, you know, I wonder, i- is there, is there a way we could move forward with this? All right, and then with a directive to the GM to say, please go to Tri-State and said, and see if there's any other way they can reduce that cost, or just at least show it to them. In other words, we'll authorize it, but to have, just GM, ask that question and say, guys, what, what, do we have any other leeway with regard to the pricing, with ever some concern from, you know, upper management? Do you have any flexibility on the pricing? And they, they may say yes, they may say no. I don't know. But I'm just trying to throw out, you know, a possible option, because I think we do need to move forward. I'm in favor of it. Uh, but, you know, maybe it's just a thing. Any, any thoughts on that approach, Steve?
No, well, before they throw that approach. I mean, Whalen's email stated that the cost was forty-two five. And the two things that were not included was the pad and the crane. The pad's already in, we've already done that. That was done by our Public Works Department, so there's no cost for the pad. I can't believe the crane is going to be eight thousand dollars. So I think.
There's a cost for the pad, and you have to, it's concrete involved. We put the pad in.
I understand. It, it wasn't anywhere near four thousand dollars, which is what Whalen says in their email, that it's going to be an extra ten K to, to install this thing, and that's just not accurate. We just need to talk with Whalen and get the numbers tied down.
Wait a minute, wh- where does it say there's going to be an extra ten K to install?
Oh, it's an email from Whalen to the design team.
But I mean, they got their, their prices right, their prices right here. I mean, it's pretty simple. The Whalen price is right here on this thing. It states that the pad will already be there, it, it provide, will provide the, uh, the way to pick the thing up and stick it over there. Natural gas connections will be there, conduit connections, A T S are part of the base bid. Um, and, you know, so, I mean, I, that wasn't a question. I mean, everybody's going to need help lifting a big old generator onto a pad, and electricians don't build, you do concrete. So I wasn't questioning that at all.
Let me, hey, Steve, so I want to make sure I understand your comments. You're saying that right now, Whalen has estimated that in order to place the generator on the pad, you're talking ten K, is that ten K? Just to place the generator, or does that include the installation, testing, and, and initial fire up of the thing?
They, they quote the price of forty-two three sixty-six. Sorry, my phone is very small. Um, and then they add some things to it. So the general contractor will supply a machine capable of four thousand pounds. They'll provide a concrete pad, and they'll provide the gas connection, exactly what Tom said. So those three things were not in that forty-two five. I think what we're asking to be approved is forty-two five. I think there's, there's some uncertainty about the other costs above that.
So if I hear you correctly, we could potentially approve an expense of forty-two five and still not have a finished product. Would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, based on their email.
And would that be the same for Barnes?
Yeah, Barnes has the same exclusion there. I don't think Barnes, I can't find anywhere in Barnes' actual description that they included the transfer switch, which is that three thousand plus or minus.
I didn't either until I saw it on that, and which was upon me. I didn't either until I saw this proposal from March.
The section sheet that came, Tom, I agree. It's in there, but they didn't put it in the original.
Oh, I mean, look, it's, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to stall construction, because we're all sitting around here talking about seven thousand dollars in the big project of the thing. I'm sure you're going to save four times that much when it's all said and done. I don't question that at all. Uh, my only question was, I would just run up to Tri-County and say, what, no, why is this thing eleven thousand more than the other guys? And can you just cut a couple bucks off of it, make it look good? Or just explain it to me and say, just, well.
I got it. That's all. I got it. That's it. Yeah, no, and I, I totally respect that. I will do that. I will, uh, we'll do this afterwards. Um, yeah, there's a bigger picture here, and I think I just heard that from Tom. I, I, I appreciate that. And if we're going to start pulling up emails and other things and everything like that, I got to tell you. No, I don't want to question.
That wasn't you.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you. I, I will talk to them. Uh, we will talk.
All right, other, other discussion. And seeing none, and appreciate all the back and forth. It's been very good. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All's in favor of approving the capital purchase request presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed?
Aye.
So please record a six to one vote, and the capital purchase request is approved. And thank you guys for discussing that. I think it was very helpful. Um, that ends.
I mean, well, now he doesn't even have to talk to him at this point.
Sorry.
No, I told you I would.
I know you will, but I'm just saying.
I, I, and I do see that.
You know, I, I.
All right, hold on, let me chair the meeting.
No, I'm just, all right.
Well, I don't appreciate that.
Hold on, hold on.
He's had nothing. I don't appreciate that. It has nothing to do with you.
Guys, enough, right? I think we were there. I think we've had a good discussion, and, and, you know, let's move on to the next issue, all right? We made, we made a decision, and I think it's in the best interest. Everybody had the, the right kind of input. And I'm sincere when I say, I really do like to have these kinds of conversations that, you know, sort of force is a bad word, that, that, uh, you know, require us to think through the, the issue. I mean, it's a very good thing. We're going to be better after all of this. So, in any event, the next, we have no more items on the, uh, uh, under capital purchase request, so the next item on the agenda is new business. There's a motion to adjourn to a closed session. Colette, would you, uh, the motion was amended during the, uh, approval of the agenda for, uh, today's meeting, so would you please read that motion, please?
The motion, um, states as follows, says, at a meeting at the Board of Directors of Ocean Pines Association in, held on this twentieth day of March, twenty twenty at ten a.m. in the boardroom at the administration building, the board goes to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussion of matters pertaining to potential actions to be taken in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic specifically relating to discussion of individual owner assessment accounts and matters pertaining to employees and personnel as permitted by the Maryland homeowners association act, section eleven B, one eleven four one, and eleven to one eleven four eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
You know, discussion, I'll go.
I have a discussion.
Uh.
Um, I just want to reiterate my previous objection. I, I know that this is all clumped together with employee things that we need to speak of in closed session, but I do believe that when we're talking about, um, that it was put out there that we were going to the closed session for individual assessment, individual property owner's assessment accounts. And I truly believe that this is for a community of Ocean Pines and not individual property owner, or one individual, the way it's written in our, in our, uh, resolutions. And the Maryland homeowners association documents. I just want to, I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Other discussion. Colette.
Um, I see the two as linked, because there is going to be financial repercussion of making this, making any adjustments and assessments that may impact decisions regarding employees. And so I think that in the larger discussion, does need to be held at closed session because of implications to our staff of financial positions that we're going to have to consider.
Other discussion.
Yeah, I, me, I, on the original motion that came out, I was not in support of, and I emailed you all about that, in support of doing a closed session. With the added things that have to be discussed, and I think we do have to go into closed session, but initially, I was not in favor of doing it. I felt like we need to have homeowners opportunity to give input into conversation around the virus issues.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, as amended, I will agree to go in closed session, but as it was originally stated, I'm with Tom and Steve, because, look, it's been a hundred and two years since our country's even come close to something like this, and we have a community that has a wide range of concerns. Okay? And even if we go into closed session, we have to be as open as possible in giving people information. This is time when you need more information to quell fear and concern, not less.
Cammy?
Is there any way to bifurcate this at all, that we discuss the initial issues in open session, and then the personnel issues affecting the Ocean Pines personnel in closed session? Would the, would you accept the, a friendly amendment to do so?
I, I would, I, I would think that, uh, I'm sorry, I would think that the discussions we have today, as Colette said, appear to be intertwined with personnel decisions. I would think that whatever's, we have a meeting coming up on April first, that whatever, um, I mean, that's ten days away. Whatever decisions we make, and our announcements we make, I think the public will have plenty of opportunity to, uh, express their concerns with public comment at that meeting. So I would prefer, my own position is I prefer we move forward as the motion states. Because we're going to get a lot of feedback regardless of what we do, and I don't know what we're going to do.
So, uh, let me comment. The, uh, the intent in my mind was, since we, we, I was a proponent of going into the closed session, and obviously, now with regard to the interaction between, uh, you know, the discussion of assessments, the potential effect on, uh, staffing, that it needs to be in closed session. But the idea here is, uh, you know, my intent, and I had shared it with several of you, that we weren't going to really make a decision. We were going to come up with some guidance that we think was, is the right way to go, with every intention of putting that out to, uh, the, um, uh, to the, uh, membership. I'd rather, you know, in my mind, I'd rather have them make comment on some of the decisions we made and counter it with this, rather than sort of elongate the discussion on, on topics that potentially could not even be considered a solution, but we waste, not waste, but we use time on that. So the idea, and Larry's correct, and that was kind of the, the, the sort of how do we get this information out to everybody prior to April first with, and actually, a solicitation of saying, by the way, here is where we're thinking right now. We haven't made a final decision yet. Most likely, we may decide to make a final decision on the April first meeting, which is regularly scheduled board meeting. Please solicit the public comments. Now you have information on where we, as the board, are collectively thinking with regard to assessments, and we need feedback before we make a final decision. I think that's the, the practical way to go with this particular approach, in my opinion. Other comments, Tom?
Uh, I mean, I've solicited over fifteen comments from other people within Ocean Pines on what would help them, and obviously, we're going to make a decision collectively that supports the people of Ocean Pines, and helps them as much as possible, as well as keeps us running as, as, as solidly as we can. I mean, obviously, we can't have nobody have an associate, have a payment on May first, or May thirty-first. So I, I appreciate that. We have talked to a lot of people. I would hope that we can come to some sort of conclusion, figure out the details, and get this done as quickly as possible, if not today, sometime within, you know, days. Not, you know, because there are a lot of people that are hurting, and it didn't go get any better. I'm just trying to figure out a way to ease some people's minds, so it doesn't, so they don't think everybody's after them for their last buck when they're not making it.
Yeah, and I, and, and to echo that same sentiment, Tom, I think the fact that we're meeting about this issue shows that we, as a board, have, definitely have that concern, both primarily from our membership perspective, but also, we can't ignore the fact that we also have, uh, you know, a, a homeowners association to run that has various amenities, financial requirements, and so on and so forth. So I think it's a testament to our approach as a team to, you know, have this discussion, and to take it very seriously. That's our responsibility, and hence, that's why we're going to have these discussions. So, and we clearly want to make sure that we, not only with our own input, but with input from the community, make a decision that is fair and equitable as much as possible. Steve?
As I asked Tom, but do you think if, if we don't make a final decision till April one, that's creating a huge problem for some of the people you've talked to?
It's not creating a huge problem. I, it, right now, it's probably more of a peace of mind for people that are, that are getting ready for their April first payments and, and putting their, having their kids home all the time, and not, and, you know, there's, there's just a piece of, I mean, I don't think it's going to be a massive problem if it's April first, but the earlier we do it, the more peace of mind these people have, knowing whether they have to go to the second, third, or fourth job in order to keep their family fit. I mean, it's just that simple. I, it's not, I'm not trying to be doomsday machine, but there's a lot of people out there that are going, you know, and, and there's, that, that want to know that we're, we're, we're there for them, and I want them to know that we're there for them. We're having this meeting for that reason, so we can take care of the people that take care of us and, and, and keep Ocean Pines going, and that's it. Uh, and, and if it has to be in closed session, I don't care what we have to do. I really don't. If that's the way everybody wants to do it, I'll do closed session as long as we get something accomplished that takes care of the people in the pines.
I, yeah, I could not have said that any better. I mean, this is probably, and I hope that you all realize, you're the smartest group of people I've ever worked with. And I'm proud to be a part of this group, and I really want to make sure that the people that are watching this, and the people that will hear about it later know that we're not hiding the ball. And if we can all say, no, we're not hiding the ball, we're going to work really hard, we're going to come up with some decisions, and we're going to make sure that we get this word out, because there is discomfort. I mean, I have, I have neighbors, you have neighbors. Neighbors are getting laid off, and, and we're all very, very concerned about that. So if this is the decision of the group, then I am going to stand to support that.
Other discussion, right?
Uh, hey, Tom, I'm a hundred percent with you. I mean, we have to let the people know that as much as possible, we have their back. But there's a fundamental thing in math, okay? You can only have as many unknowns as you have equations. And right now, there's a hell of a lot of unknowns that we're trying to deal with. And they may, that may preclude us from even coming up with a decision on April first. Because there are things in motion that we control, a little bit like the assessments out there. Who knows how many people are going to pay it? I sure don't know. Okay? And who knows what's going to happen over the next two weeks that we have no control of from the state and federal governments? So until some of that stuff plays out, despite our best efforts to show people we're going to do everything possible, we may not be able to come to a conclusion. Sorry. And that's the discussion we need to have.
Yes, so, uh, other discussion before we vote. All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All's in favor of adjourned to closed session for the reasons stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed? Please record this vote as we have. There are no other items on the agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to open session.
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Thank you, everyone.